Recording. You bailed yourself out, buddy. Now that pitch off and...
Good evening, everyone. Read the statement and we'll continue on with our meeting. Adequate notice in this meeting has been given in... Given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws 1975, said notice was advertised as Ray Park Press and The Beacon and was posted on a bulletin board showing the time and place of this meeting. Rise for a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number one, consideration for ordinance for fire alarm systems and key boxes.
This is presented to me from Jack Conity of Lenoka Harbor Fire Company. He says that he's seen throughout other communities where, and I believe Stafford has it, where what they're called Knox boxes, where there are entry keys in these boxes that the fire companies can access to the commercial businesses. He says, you know, instead of knocking down a door, you can't get a hold of somebody but via emergency access telephone, that if they, and again, it would only be limited to who gets the entry codes to get into these Knox boxes to be able to access a business when a fire alarm gets off. So he would like consideration for the governing body to review the two samples he provided, and I'm sure we can get more. One is from the Stafford code, and I'm not sure where the second one was from, but for us to adopt that in our code book. And that would be part of the planning board approval as well, that the commercial businesses, based on their planning board application, would have to include a Knox box on their location.
I too spoke to Fork River Fire Department Chief Scott Mosel earlier. He's in strong favor of it. Said it's worked well in Stafford. In addition to that, he was recently out of fire with Fork River, where a fusible link of sprinkler went off. Sprinkler was inside destroying the business, could not get a key holder to show up for a whole hour. So the damage was worse from the sprinkler, they couldn't turn off any actual fire. So I think it's a smart thing to do, cause a lot less damage, and I'm in favor of it after talking to him.
Yeah, when Pete and I met with Jack last Thursday night, Pete?
Yes, sir.
This is one of the things he brought up, he thought it'd be a good idea, instead of just tearing these doors down, three, four, five hundred dollars for these doors. I have no problem with it, I think it's a pretty good idea.
Any other comments?
Not really.
Would you like Mr. Connors to draft an ordinance to do that? We can, or did you want to look at more samples, or?
I would like to read an ordinance first, we're not adopting it tonight, are we?
No, absolutely not, but he can put an ordinance together, and then you can review it, and you can tweak it as necessary.
Yeah.
Who's paying for the boxes?
The commercial business pays for the boxes, it's part of their installation.
Yeah, I wanted to read it too, that's why I'm lukewarm.
Okay.
Item number two, temporary capital budget, radio purchases.
I know we've had several discussions over the past couple of weeks with regards to budgeting and the capital budget, and as you know, by the time we get our budget put together, we get the capital ordinance in place, we're not purchasing things until July, and then by the time it actually gets here, you're looking at September. There's been a request from the Chief of Police, because we're having severe radio problems. We've already fixed the phone problems, or they're underway of being repaired, I should say, with the telephones, that for us to convert to the 700 megahertz system that the county is housing. I have prices for that, and it's $866,000 to do the conversion, plus we still have the remainder of the emergency service radios and payers at 450. So the question was, did we want to do a temporary capital budget right now, early on in this year, so that by March, we could be out purchasing these radios, and hopefully by May, be complete converted over to the 700, instead of looking at it by October. It is a serious situation, we would have to update some of our repeaters and those that we have now, and you're looking at about 1.3 million just to update our current system to get that running, so it makes more sense to convert over to the 700.
Over the last month or so, I guess I've had a couple of meetings with the Chief of Police, and this is a big, big item on him. We've got real problems with the system that we have now. Sometimes they just drop in the middle of the talk. The cops have got real problems, they can't communicate with one another and so forth like that. I think we've committed to this, to do it, I don't, whether we do it now, I think we should do it now, instead of waiting until April, May, when we normally do it, and just put back to this and it's a part of what we're doing for the federal capital budget. That's how I look at it.
So I know we had a number of problems, you know, a lot of meetings over this, so is this going to fix the problems?
Yes.
Yes, you were told yes.
Yes, I even told the chief that, even if it doesn't, he's not to come. But no, this is going to fix the problem.
Okay, I will remember.
This is going to fix the problem. And this is going to give us, you know, they dropped out there in Bamford, too.
I, well, I know, yes, I understand that's part of the problem.
Supposedly, it's crystal clear, and it's like you and I talking right here, so.
We don't take this lightly.
I know, none of us.
Talking about this amount of money, but when we talk to the chief, and talk to some of the folks, county sheriff, we have seen that there's been some comm issues out in Bamford, and we have also seen, you may have also, Committee Man, when you were mayor last year, you and I got called in, as we is on a mayor, and we saw that there was really no comm at all, and that was a serious situation, that there was firearms involved down in our beach area. So, this is an ongoing issue, it's for officer safety, and it's for public safety.
I understand that, but I also thought we've had conversations, that nobody was sure whether this would definitely fix the problem of the gaps in coverage, whether we switched or not. So that is my concern, that we might be spending this much money upgrading the system, and that there still might be gaps in coverage.
I have been assured by the, and feel free to give the chief a call, he has assured us that this will solve the problem.
Okay, so can I ask a question, as far as, so basically, there's two issues, as I see it, the radios and then the repeaters?
If, pardon, if we keep the system that we have now, we have to upgrade the repeaters.
Okay.
Okay, and do all of that, and that's really, not really worth it, because we eventually got to have to go to this anyhow, so.
I agree.
So, instead of doing the repeaters, just...
I know, I'm in favor of doing both, but I guess I should have finished before I finish my question. So we're purchasing the radios from one vendor?
Yes.
Okay, as far as the repeaters, who does the work, who does the repeaters? Is the same vendor supplying the repeaters?
It's all, everything that needs to be done for the radio system is one vendor.
Okay, so do we have a guarantee, or a warranty, or?
We had a meeting.
Something writing that says, you know, this will solve our problem, that's, I mean, that solves, basically?
We can, we can reach out to the vendor rep.
Well, I think, we kind of do have some communication via email, that this was going to solve the problems, and I can tighten that up to get those direct repeaters.
Yeah, so we're not, and the chief making the guarantee, the guarantee should come from the vendor.
Um, it's sort of, it's sort of different. I'll make sure that it does.
No, we can reach out to the vendor rep and make sure, make sure it's going to work.
I think it's not a problem.
Yeah, okay.
Item three, Knights of Columbus.
So that's approval for myself and Linda to draft the necessary paperwork and resolutions to get this in place.
Provided you get the, from the vendor rep?
Gotcha.
Item number three, Knights of Columbus facility, proposed building name.
Right, as you know, we're in the process of closing on the Knights of Columbus building, and one of the things that they had asked for was, they wanted to put a plaque that they would supply in the building, which I had imposed those contents of the plaque. Since then, they wanted to know if we would make a consideration to name the building Capitano Hall. I told them I didn't have the liberty to agree to that, that that's up to the governing body as to what we're naming the hall.
Veronica called me about this, my feeling was, it's, Chris Redd is a spy out here, obviously he's a great man, but I think we should stay away from naming halls and buildings up to religious people, because we are a government entity. I have no problem with the plaque in the hall, I think that's a great idea, but I would be against naming it after it.
I would like more time to think about it, since I...
Steve, you're smiling up here.
We do, we don't, yeah, this is not a decision you have to make, yes, yes.
I'd like to know a little bit more about the history of the company, and...
Somebody get a picture of Steve, he's actually smiling up here.
Item number four, 2021 budget meeting dates.
Okay, well, that's that time of the year where we have to narrow down our budget meeting dates.
We do, by the way.
I would like to have them on the opposite Thursdays, that we don't have township meetings like we have in years past. Linda Capello did say she's going on vacation in February, she's not sure she'll be here on the 18th or not, she's not sure what week, if she's going away the week before, the week, the week of the 18th. So I just didn't know what you want to do. If we wanted to start as early as February 4th, have the emergency service squads come in before us, make their presentations, tentatively schedule one through the 18th, then move to March 4th, and hopefully by March 18th, we can have a finalized budget, with maybe a proposed introduction by March 25th.
So, so we go the 4th, and nothing on the 18th?
Well, I would still schedule for the 18th, because if she's not away, I'd rather have it prepared, and I can just let you guys know that we're going to have it or not. There's no point in having a budget meeting if our CFO is not going to be here.
Okay, yeah, no, I agree with that, so.
What time?
You guys tell me.
I'd like it early, 4:30, 5:30?
Can we go 5, and then wrap stuff up?
Yeah, 5, okay.
5 on the 18th?
So we're going to go February 4th first?
Oh, sorry.
So we're going to do February 4th, February 18th, March 4th?
Wait, February 4th?
February 18th, March 4th, and March 18th. That should be enough to get us through, to make a finalized budget, with an anticipated introduction of March 25th, with an adoption of hopefully April 22nd.
Can I make a suggestion, that we limit department heads to seven minutes?
Seven?
I thought 10 is probably a little bit too much, 7, 7 sounds about right.
So it's 5:00 PM and a limit, now, that's...
No, that's just a suggestion, it's up to everybody else.
They think 10 or more is adequate?
All right, so, so let's talk about the departments that you want to have present before us. First aid squads, emergency fire companies, correct, and dive team. And then the police department and the public works department is that what you want to, that's normally what we limit it to, and recreation. So are those defined to do all those?
That's what we do each time.
Yeah, they keep the same pattern.
So on the 4th, we'll do the emergency service squads, and then I'll schedule the rest out.
We don't need a whole history. The chief, I'll talk to the chief. Everybody get the radio.
All right, we're good. All right, so I'll advertise them, and I'll keep you abreast if we're going to have it on the 18th, but I'll schedule it for now. Other than that, I have nothing else to add to this agenda, does anyone have anything to add to this agenda?
Anything else for the good of the order? Motion to close.
Move it. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Township meeting, adequate notice in this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws 1975. Said notice was advertised as Ray Park Press, The Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting, while a salute to the flag, moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First reading of ordinance number 2021-01, authorizing the conveyance of property to the County of Ocean for traffic improvements, Lacy Road and Railroad Road.
In order to the township of Lacy County, Washington, New Jersey, authorizing the conveyance of a portion of an approved right-of-way at the township of Lacy to the County of Ocean for the widening of a portion of Lacy Road in accordance with NJS A48, 12-13B. This, again, is the Block 1,000, Lot 4, which is the railroad right-of-way, the County of Ocean is putting in a traffic light there, they need to acquire some construction and property easements, and this is just authorizing the transfer. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
And Mayor Curta.
Yes.
Item number two, first reading of ordinance number 2021-02, amending Chapter 79 of the Code to establish the position of technical support specialist.
In order to the township of Lacy County, Washington, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 79 of the Township Code to help officers and employees so as to create the position of technical support specialist. This is just in accordance with the realignment of certain positions through civil service, it is going from a network administrator to technical support specialist, one. It's not a new hire, it's not a new position, not just aligning the current person with the right title.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Curta.
Yes.
Item number three, first reading of ordinance number 2021-03, amending Chapter 79 of the Code to establish position of planning aide slash project coordinator.
In order to the township of Lacy County, Washington, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 79 of the Township Code to help officers and employees so as to create the position of planning aide slash project coordinator.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curta.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-56, authorizing an extension of leave, of a leave of absence.
Resolution, township of Lacy County, Washington, New Jersey, authorizing an extension of a leave of absence for David Brown under the Family Medical Leave Act.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Curta.
Yes.
Item number five, resolution 2021-57, adopting a cash management plan for the year 2021.
A resolution, township of Lacy County, Washington, New Jersey, adopting a cash management plan for the year 2021.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Curta.
Yes.
Number six, resolution 2021-58, authorizing the tax assessor to file assessor's appeals.
Resolution, township of Lacy County, Washington, New Jersey, authorizing the tax assessor to file an assessor's appeal to correct certain errors made on assessments for the year 2021, and authorizing the tax assessor as gage in filing the petition of appeal, and roll back complaint forms.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Curta.
Yes.
Item number seven, resolution 2021-59, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution, township of Lacy County, Washington, New Jersey, authorizing a refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curta.
Yes.
Item number eight, resolution 2021-60, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution, township of Lacy, County of Washington, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $6,467,340.97.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curta.
Yes.
Item number nine, month of reports.
For the month of December, the Municipal Clerk's Office collected receipts in the amount of $2,952.42. For the month of November, Community Development collected receipts in the amount of $90,759.20. And for the month of December, Community Development collected receipts in the amount of $82,214.55. Motion to accept the report, is read.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Item number 10, motion to approve township meeting minutes of December 22nd, 2021. Move it.
2020, that's a typo on my part.
2020, you're right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 11, motion to approve township meeting minutes of January 1st, 2021. Move it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Comments from the committee, Deputy Mayor Giuliano?
Well, we go the same way, you want to go with Stephen?
No, we got a deputy first.
Well, always a deputy first.
Sure, go ahead. I was going to talk, I was going to talk about, I did a lot of research on the coronavirus vaccine, but I was going to talk about the White House also, so what would your pleasure be, Peter? The White House or the coronavirus vaccine?
I have my fill of the coronavirus vaccine, so please, the White House.
Okay, so today I received my last correspondence from the White House, I just want to, or disregarding other aspects of the administration, I found the professionals on the call very knowledgeable and professional. I'll push back that they didn't try their best, and didn't know what they were doing in regards to putting out, you know, the seriousness of the situation of the coronavirus, and trying to organize a nationwide vaccine program. They were fully aware of all the logistical problems that go with rolling out a program that size, and other than the president, I was on a conference call with, like I said, the highest levels of federal government, I was on with the vice president, all the doctors that were in the news, Dr. Fauci, Dr. Birx, and I just want to thank the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs for giving me the opportunity to listen in on those conference calls, and then, and I fully enjoyed reading the transcripts of those calls when I couldn't, or of those calls when I couldn't be available to listen in, so I just want to thank them and let everybody know, so those are my comments.
Thank you, Mayor. That was very important, Stephen.
Deputy Mayor Giuliano?
Thank you, Mayor. The only comments I have tonight are, I'd like to give a big shout out and a thank you to our school district. The teachers and the administration and the staff, what they're going through right now, it's, you know, my wife working in that field, I know, going back and forth, and going to work, not going to work, it's kind of, and the learning factor with computers at home. So I really want to give them a real good shout out, because, and when you see a teacher or anybody that works for that school district, thank them, because they're going through a lot to try to keep our kids on the right path. What else do we have? I'd just like to thank again all the volunteers, the police department, public works, I know they're going to, they're going through a lot of tough times, the volunteers, because of COVID is, you know, it's getting rampant again, as we were just talking right there, it's getting crazy, and, and Pete should be able to tell us a little bit about it, it's just ramping up. And so, it's going to be a lot of pressure on the volunteers, the police department, the first aiders, so, you know, there again, if you see them, thank them, because they're going to be, they're going through hell right now. Small businesses, the same thing, I've spoken to some of them, we've, they're starting to see some, you know, people are listening, at least they're trying to. I know I've done, I'm doing a lot of takeout, I gained a lot of weight over it, but I'm doing takeout to try to help them as much as we can. With a wife that likes to cook, I'm really making it hard on her, because we're trying to support all the local businesses by, you know, dining out, or dining in and out, whatever way you want to look at it. That's all I have, man.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Committee Man Dyckoff?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, welcome to your first meeting as well, second meeting as mayor, first real meeting, you know, so welcome. You're pretty good, you know, a couple critiques over here, Mr. McDonald, that I have, but...
I'm sure you have critiques.
Well, let me know. So, I don't want to talk about Washington, I don't want to talk about coronavirus, I want to talk about Lacy. So I follow social media a lot, and it's pretty interesting, when something happens in town, you get a lot of comments, so the latest and greatest, well, no, not latest, but one thing, there was an article on social media about the three new fast food restaurants that are opening, Chipotle, Burger King, and then, and then Starbucks. And then, of course, you know, when White Castle, when Taco Bell opened, and Wendy's, why do we have so many fast food restaurants? Well, I'll tell you what, I live on Sunrise Boulevard, and I pass into White Castle or Wendy's every day, and the line around, and Taco Bell, the line around there is just tremendous. And it's, you know, people are, you know, looking to eat out, and they're looking to get something quick, and that's why some of these restaurants, as Mr. Giuliano mentioned, are doing very well. But, you know, people make jokes about, well, we're the fast food capital of Ocean County, well, that's, I don't agree with that, but I'll tell you what we are, we're a destination for a lot of, a lot of businesses. So if you go from north to south, east to west, what do you have? Well, we have three Japanese restaurants, we have numerous, from mid-level to high-end Italian restaurants, we've got pubs, we've got taverns, we've got world-class seafood restaurants, Captain's Inn and the waterfront, Capri's, which not only has one location, but will soon have two locations, we've got probably the premier workwear store in Ocean County, if not, you know, around, in Tony's Workwear, Dance Studios, of course, big box stores, and little box stores, and Bob Square deal, we can get anything from a nut to a turkey fryer. You know, just, we've got a lot to offer in Lacy Township. We are a destination for a lot of restaurants and stores, and people are starting to reinvent themselves, and I think over the next 10 years, you're going to see a big change in Lacy. I think it'll be a good change. And that's about all I have, thanks very much, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Committee Man McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. I too, I'm going to skip Washington DC, because I'm disgusted, Trenton, I'm disgusted, so. But let me talk about Lacy a little bit. Like I said before, I met with the Chief of Police and two chiefs of the fire departments to go over their budgets, Mayor Curta was with us when we were over in Lenoka Harbor, and we got a nice little surprise, is that a fire went off when we were there, you know, I'd never seen the inside of how the whole thing works, and was very surprised, they were in and out real quick, from what you said, Pete?
Yes.
It was, I mean, it was absolutely amazing, we walked in there, and it was just the chief and the deputy chief, and then all of a sudden, the bell goes off, and out they were in a matter of minutes, and just goes to tell you how dedicated they are. I also want to talk a little about Holtech, and it was in the papers, about the prototype. We are one of, I think, three or four sites they are considering, whether they've made up their mind or not, we do not know, at least I don't know, and I'd like to see it happen. When we were out there the Friday before Thanksgiving, Dr. Singh did make a statement that the plans he had for that site down at Oyster Creek were good, high-paying jobs, and I didn't follow up on that, because we were off onto something else very quickly, but I'm kind of hoping this is it, so that would be that. The other thing I want to say is, you know, we talked about the coronavirus, and, you know, I've been working out of my basement since March, and I can tell you this, that for me, I got to get out and walk around every, every couple hours, just, just to get some fresh air, and I would tell everybody to do that, I mean, if you're boxed up in the house, get out, bundle up, I know it's cold, put a hat on, put some gloves on, and go for a 10, 15-minute walk, just to refresh yourself, because you can't stay in the house 24/7, seven days a week, and if you know somebody that's in that position, go over and knock on the door, and, you know, take them for a walk with you, you know, even if it's just down to the end of the driveway or back or something like that, just to get some fresh air and some sunlight, because that's real, really important. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. And staying with the theme with businesses, you know, I want to try to highlight some of our businesses here during my tenure in this seat. To that end, I was fortunate enough, I play no favorites with pizza, I eat pizza from everywhere in our community. Tomatoes, I was there with a famous pizza blogger, who also runs the Central Ocean Business Association, pretty interesting, we had a good video, posted it, a lot of hits, business picked up, so if you're there at Tomatoes, support a local business, and that is a good thing, it was an interesting night. And anytime we could use social media, that's a good thing as well, to try to support And anytime we could use social media, that's a good thing as well, to try to support our businesses. COVID. I want to remind our folks who look on our website, nsochd.org, you do testing over there, you sign up for a vaccine over there. There's also a breakdown for municipalities. Talks about the total being thirty-seven, a little over thirty-seven thousand. We get about, on average, about ten, eleven, twelve new cases a day in Lacy Township. It funnels in through that website. I still say to people, we've been keeping, the county health department's been keeping those stats since approximately February last year, there aren't thirty-seven thousand active cases of COVID, okay? There are active cases, and they're in all of our municipalities, there's not thirty-seven thousand of them. On that website, there is infected, there is deceased, there should also be a recover, in my opinion here, as a Lacy resident, not as an employee over there. There should be a recover. It tells the whole story, because people, the vast majority of people, do recover. I want people to choose Lacy Township to continue to do business and continue to recreate. That's important. So the other part of the story is that people do recover. I've had residents come up to me, say they get pings on their phone, and they updated the numbers again today, it's another ten, another fifteen, another thirty. There's also a lot of people that recover, so that's a fair part of the story. And I want to continue to tell that I thank Committee member McDonald for going out to Fort River Fire Department, Little Uncle Harbor Fire Department, we also met with the chief this week. Budgets are difficult things. They always raise blood pressure in the back room, there's always some disagreements, and disagreements are good too. But at the end, we try to do what's right for the people, we have to keep in mind the tax rate, and we want to have a fertile environment here for our businesses and our families. We want to, we want to take care of our employees, it's a difficult thing to do. So we're doing a balancing act, we are currently talking with our CFO, and we're moving forward with that. Committee member McDonald talked about Oyster Creek, there's a lot of good ideas, I think that some of them will pan out, it's a large amount of capital that's down there. Maybe it'll be battery storage, maybe they'll produce batteries. Maybe you have a situation like with Orsted, and the wind farm that's proposed off the coast of Atlantic County. But there's one thing that we can be sure of, this governing body will advocate for this town and for our waitables and for our people. And that's where it starts, charity starts at home, we start at home here too. So that's the way I'll close my comments for this evening. Open the floor to comments now.
Yes, sir.
Barry Bender, Historic Bay Avenue, Forkett River. Attended the board of health meeting last night, Mayor was there. Was waiting with bated breath to see who they chose for the animal control officer, and to my dismay, they went with the animal control officer from last year. We had run a petition with over, we got, at this point, and the petition's staying open, over five hundred and fifty signatures on the petition of people who were pushing for Popcorn Park because of the humane way that they treat the animals as opposed to an exterminating service. Part of my problem with last night is I asked to the chair of the board, can you give us some idea as to what the reasons were, how the decision was made? And the chair didn't say, but the person sitting next to the chair said to me, thank you for your comments, which was extremely rude. I'm a citizen of Lacy Township, and I know, I will continue researching, I'm sure by law there are things that have to be shared, and I will find those things, because that was totally improper.
Excuse me, what's that? Moving back a little bit, so how did it turn out?
They went with A Academy. Popcorn Park, they turned down, and I'll just make a statement, I don't want to hear shop locally, okay, when you don't support a business from within town as far as being your own animal control officer. I think it's totally hypocritical for you to say shop locally and then turn down a business who is in town, has been in town for an extended period of time, and turn them down when they apply to be your animal control officer, and who do a much more humane job, okay, as far as taking care of the animals, not just domestic but also wild.
And asking another question, did you ask the question why?
I was told, thank you for your comments.
Who told you?
I think he is presently the co-chair of the committee, okay? I wasn't happy with it, I'll tell you, I wasn't happy with it.
Am I perfectly honest with you? If I was there, I probably wouldn't have been happy either.
Yeah.
But answer the reason why.
But we're going to keep the petition open, and we will be doing research as to what information we are due as citizens of Lacy. Again, over five hundred and fifty signatures from, this is just citizens of Lacy Township that signed that petition, and I just want to know, you know, what more than five hundred and fifty citizens from Lacy Township, et cetera, would sway that? And to reiterate what we said when we were here before, okay? Popcorn Park is an all-inclusive, includes a veterinarian and all the services, they have the trap, neuter, vaccinate, and release program, and there is a problem with people dumping cats here in Lacy Township, I got two eaten on my front porch, okay? It would be a big way, instead of capturing these cats, yes, sir?
Barry, why don't you do this, you're an intelligent man, why, you can get copies of the RFPs, the proposals, why don't you, I mean, it's, sometimes it's hard for someone to explain the reasoning, I mean, they look at the
Well, you don't say to someone, thank you for your comments.
I understand, listen, Barry, I understand, you know.
Okay.
But can we get Barry copies of the proposals?
I can get them, I can Oprah them, I'm sure I can Oprah them.
I mean, and, you know, maybe you can see if it's apples to apples, you know, there's, I'm sure they didn't do it out of spite for Popcorn Park Zoo, but I mean, this way
Well, we need, personally, I want to find out what went into the judgment and why it turned out that way.
There's not a person on this board, everyone on this board is very well-tenured. I know I've had Deputy Mayor Giuliano speak very highly about Popcorn Park Zoo, there've been volunteers that work there, we take our kids there.
Mm-hmm.
One thing I
It attracts people into the businesses that we want to have.
There's no question about it, it's part of the fabric of who we are.
And has been for years.
And has been for decades.
Right.
The issue here is, was legal. I had opinions, I shared what I could, I am the liaison, this governing body appoints the people to the board.
Absolutely.
I cannot impose will, I cannot create a vote, I cannot coerce, I will not text
No, I understand that, I understand that, Mayor, hundred percent.
Yes, we love, we love the Popcorn Park Zoo. I could not control that vote, that would have been completely unacceptable.
Absolutely, I don't disagree with you, but I want to know what their reasoning was for the vote. My understanding is the difference in price was not great enough that you don't shop locally, okay? And that's an important thing, and I've dealt with Popcorn Park since I moved here in nineteen eighty-eight, okay? I've had cats fixed there, various things done there, they're tremendous, they treat the animals with humane care, okay? And to me, my opinion, an exterminating company that's a corporation from outside of town won't use the same type. And again, our neighbors in Barnegat, et cetera, are using Popcorn Park. It just makes sense, they're in our town, but it's not your place to make the call, but I'm going to find out, one way or another, of how the choice was made.
And I will tell you, your folks that came, because I have attended every meeting the last several months that you were there, they made a very compelling case.
Yes.
The board voted the way that they voted.
No, I understand, I understand, I'm just letting, the petition will stay open, it's not done, as far as I'm concerned. We're going to continue collecting signatures, and for argument's sake, if it takes until next year, we'll be back again next year. But I'm, hopefully, I plan on getting the information as to how the decision was made well before next year. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sharon Prendergast, eighteen oh nine Ravine Drive. I too was there last night, and I've not been treated that rudely in all my life. I was dismissed like I didn't matter at all. I had the same concerns and questions, I asked for transparency as a taxpayer, it is my tax money, and to not be even, it was like I wasn't even there. And I just wanted to say, Barry's not alone, there's a lot of us, and everybody's going to start getting louder, and we're going to start asking questions, and we're going to start sharing information, and if we can't get the details, we'll find somebody who can, maybe the press can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Flynn, Davis Avenue. Stephen, do you think that the chief of police and the director of public works can go through their budgets and capital requests in seven minutes?
Do I? Yes.
Really? I've been coming to a lot of budget meetings, there's no way that they're going to go through their
If they, but if they go to a time limit, they can work towards a seven-minute limit.
When someone comes in front of this mic, whether it takes them five minutes or an hour, there should be no time limits. Whatever they have to say needs to be said because there's a reason for it. And if you're in a hurry that you feel that you should have done quicker, maybe you should stay home that night, that's all.
Those reports are extensive, I'm a pretty sharp guy, I can read the report and get the gist of what they're looking for.
But they have every right to take as long as they need, because you don't put time limits on people when they're coming from this mic.
We might.
To speak, why should you? When people, it's freedom of speech. If you've got something to say, people should not be limited.
Other townships do have a timer, we don't, and we won't.
But when it comes down to budget requests, they're up all here, they're here for a reason. They explain and put everything down on record.
Let me tell you something, Kevin, because this is the truth, everyone up here has sat in this chair, been mayor, we will talk and have met at any request with any department head at any time. I know Mayor Kennas last year
I talked to
All of these gentlemen that have been mayor, to my knowledge, and speaking for myself, we've never said that we won't sit and meet with somebody, most people have our
But when they come here for the meeting, it's being put on record, where it needs to be put, so everybody knows what's going on. Not just the individuals, because you can't meet as five, because then you're breaking the sunshine.
Correct.
So all five of you need to be sitting here, and each chief, captain, department chief of police, director of public works, all need to speak their piece in front of you as a group, and put it on record.
We do that, but we dovetail that with liaison designations, we meet with our chiefs and our departments with a fair amount of regularity, and when we're not meeting with them, we will call.
But, but, if someone has a question that's not with them, you can get it all done in one shot right here.
There's a flip side to talking too long, you get tuned out.
There is a flip side to that.
So if you stand there for an hour, if you can't make your point in five minutes, maybe a little bit longer, you're talking too
Most of them don't take more than fifteen or twenty minutes.
We've been in those
Depending on how, depending on how
I completely disagree.
Well, listen, depend on how long their lists are, because you don't like to spend money, so every year you don't buy something, that gets on the list, and then the list gets longer because you don't want to replace stuff.
That's fine, but they don't have to talk about it.
And the cost of it keeps increasing, because, you know, you complain about spending